Okay. Good evening, everybody. This is the Wellington Conservation Commission's meeting on Wednesday, November twentieth at seven o'clock. Um, calling the meeting to order at seven oh two. And we'll do a roll call. We have Bob Chabot, Patty Phillips, Laura Rodriguez, and Nora Jones. And Patty's coming back. Okay, do I hear a motion to seat Nora for Jackie or Carol?
So moved.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, Nora, you're seated. Um, let's see. Approval of the September eighteenth minutes, we did not have an October meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Go ahead.
Time of day, we accept the uh meetings from the, what is it, uh, October?
Uh, September. September eighteenth?
September eighteenth meeting.
Okay, uh, second?
I'll second again.
Okay, thank you, Laura.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, abstained? So moved. Okay, and what, I should have asked, was there any discussion? Did anybody have any concerns or need any changes? Okay, thank you. All right, Carol's not here tonight. Um, there's been no, new expenditures. Our current budget balance is um one thousand three hundred and forty dollars. And I do have some um purchases that I made personally for, on behalf of the commission, that I'd like to be reimbursed for. Um, I had purchased some trail painting supplies, including paint and uh also some scrapers uh for our last Fenton Ruby workday. Uh, because we had three teams going out to do trailblazing that day. And um the cost for that was seventy-four dollars and sixty-four cents. And then I also purchased uh cider and some cookies for the volunteers for that day, and the cost for that was eleven twenty-seven. The total was eighty-five dollars and ninety-one cents. So I would like to be reimbursed for that if possible.
I'll make a motion to reimburse Kathy Demers eighty-five ninety-one for uh supplies and refreshments associated with the workday at Fenton Ruby Park.
Yeah.
I second it.
Okay, thank you, Nora. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any um opposed, abstained, all abstained, since that was for me? Okay, so moved. All right, uh, under, let's see, ARPA twenty-seven. Um. We expended one thousand thirty-nine dollars and seven cents in October for bridge repairs. And the current fund balance for that ARPA money is one thousand eight hundred and two dollars and ninety cents. We now have a purchase order that we can use at OL Willards to use the remainder of that. And we have until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six to spend it. So that's where that balance stands at the moment. And we can use that money for um materials for trail maintenance at the park or on Mason Road. Under old business collaborative organization um news and communication. So Cackeywick, um, the Connecticut Association of Conservation and in the Wetlands Commission. Their board member, who is the Tallinn representative, Rod Parlay, has uh contacted me and asked if he could come to our December meeting. And would like to bring uh Dr. Susan Messino, who is a professor at Trinity College. She is um a professor in the um Applied Science Department, and she has a background uh working on projects related to brain health, which is quite interesting. And she's done work on how reforestation has been very helpful for climate change, but also for public health. And so she was interested in coming to the commission and talking a little bit about that. Um, as well as how commissions can work on their natural resource inventories um to identify areas where there's core forests and forest connectivity, and how to kind of um use our natural resources to identify areas that will be important for public health, recreation, and so on. So people are interested, we'll invite them to come to our December eighteenth meeting.
It'll be fun to hear what they have to say, what angle they're taking on things.
Great, okay.
I, I would love to attend that. I unfortunately will not be around, though, so.
Okay, well, it'll be recorded. And the other thing I posed to Rod, um, because he has a lot of uh Cackeywick has gotten very re-energized, and they're trying to touch base with all the conservation commissions, as well as the inland wetland commissions, and talk to them about different um priorities that Cackeywick has. And he was asking to come to an in-person meeting, and I told him we were meeting via Zoom right now, but that perhaps in the spring, um, when it's lighter out, we're not as concerned about things like COVID and so on and so forth, that maybe we could get together as commission at the town office building and have them come out and talk a little bit more about some of the other subjects uh that are priorities for Cackeywick.
That would be great.
Okay. All right. Uh, moving on, Wellington Public Library, um, they're asking again for our support this year to provide a basket for their raffle. And I had put that information out to all of you via email, and Nora has volunteered uh to put together a basket of items. And I, I know she was working on getting a list together of things that could be purchased through Amazon, because the town has an account. Nora, you want to give us an update?
Sure, um, I was able to get mostly all of the same items as last year, so um there's some like trail guides, not trail guides, um. There are some little books on like insects in Connecticut, reptiles, um, the mammals, a bird's, and then a hiking book, some trail mix, and some eco-friendly little bags, put the trail mix in, and I put it together in a ba- in a basket, and I guess it went fast last year, so there were just two books that I had to switch around, so. There's, I can, you know, Scat Finder and Track Finder, and so.
Excellent.
And I forgot, I forgot the price that I came up with, Kathy.
I thi- I think I wrote down ninety-six dollars and some odd cents, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I mean, we could certainly vote to appropriate up to a hundred dollars. That would cover it. So.
I think it's a little cheaper than last year. I think we were over a hundred dollars last year, so.
Yeah, that's good. Um, well, yeah, that was a, um, I think a lot of people did uh buy raffle tickets toward that basket last year. I think it was popular.
Okay.
Oh, great.
And I have the letter all set to go to Rashine, and she'll order them, and should be quick.
Excellent. Yeah, do you know how long it'll take for you to receive the items, or?
Last year it happened, they came the next day. They all came the next day, so.
Now, now they can come at three in the morning.
Right.
What?
I don't know why.
Just what I want, somebody pull my driveway at three in the morning.
Right. So it's all ready to go.
Excellent, okay. So um will they come? I'm just curious, will they, um, the town have them shipped to you? So that?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so do I hear a motion to appropriate some money to purchase those items?
So, so moved.
Okay, so do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, or any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved, thank you. All right, excellent. Um, Wellington Parks and Recreation Department, they had a community hike at Fenton Ruby Park on Saturday. I don't know how many people turned out for that, but um I did leave a message for, for James to see how it went. Um, they do plan to hold their annual turkey scavenger hunt next week. So we'll be seeing uh those little turkey signs up all over Fenton Ruby Park again. And if you know of any, anybody that has young families, kids that want to get out, um, the information should be up on their website probably by the end of this week. Um, letting people know how to participate. There's things the kids have to find um at each station, I guess. So I guess that was really a popular thing last year, and so I hope the weather's nice for them. Great. Any other news that people are aware of from any other environmental organizations or things you wanted to share? This portion of the agenda? Okay, uh, properties management. Um, as far as I know, the trails are in pretty good shape at Fenton Ruby Park. Um, I did go back out to look at that Japanese stilt grass area. And it's really much larger. We had talked about getting a tarp to smother it, but it's really much larger now, and it's unfortunately, I think that still grass is invading a lot of other areas. I've seen it off of the trails as well in other areas, so. Um, unfortunately, I don't think that there's going to be a way to use small tactics on it.
Um, if, if you, if you've noticed, Kathy, that stilt grass is at the entrance to oh, the um, the Ruby Trail. Up by the uh, the homes where the cellar hole is, it's on both sides of the trail as you walk in down.
Yeah.
So.
It's been on the um Julius Trail for a lot of years, too. I mean, it's pretty much invaded into the forest. I honestly don't know what we can do at this point.
Well, I noticed that it's uh almost like everywhere around like the Mount Hope. Uh, you go further towards Rhode Island, the river's around there. It's pretty prevalent in any kind of area that's uh slightly moist most of the year.
Yeah.
So it's uh, we uh, we have to embrace it as our, one of our own now.
Wow. I know, it's one of many of the invasive plants that's really, you know, going to create some barriers for the native plants.
Right.
Um. Well, if anybody sees anything um online, or if you come across some information on managing it in a different way, let us know.
Yeah, it's, it's just the amount of seed that's in the soil. After spraying it two years with herbicides and just seeing it's still coming up. Uh, it's, you know, and that's after two years of not having any seed produced in the area. It's uh pretty amazing.
Yeah, unfortunately, the cat's out of the bag for sure.
Right.
Yeah. Um, so on the, on the good news side, uh, the Boy Scouts did um replace the uh railings on the bridge uh on October twentieth. Uh, we had three scouts out there and their dads, as well as um Ken Fluid, the scout leader. They did an excellent job. Um, and uh we're really thankful for all the work that they put into that. We also had some members of the Bedan family and also the Langebin family. Um, you know Connie Bedan and um Josh Langebin are one of our, their stewards for our trails. Well, they came out with their families and they scraped and re-blazed the Weigold and the Julius Trail. So those are, have all been um painted. Um, Chris um Demers rebuilt the trail register because the, the top of it was falling apart, so he rebuilt that. And um in December, Jackie Coolig is going to be doing a forest review of Stand Seven in the park, and Stand Seven is seventy-five acres that kind of surrounds the Ruby Trail. And she's gonna, she's gonna go out with uh Austin Harmon from Hull Forestry, and they're gonna look to see if um any tree thinning would be recommended. We have a Fenton Ruby Forest Management Plan that was done by Conwood a couple of years ago. And one of the things that they did recommend was um considering some tree thinning to improve the health of the um, the trees in that stand. So Jackie and, and Austin are going to go out and take a look at it in December and see, you know, if there's any recommendations they can bring back to the commission.
Hmm, nice.
Um, the other, the reason that also got kind of stirred up is when we were looking at options for getting to the Peddix property. One of them was using forestry equipment to go up the old Burma Road. And um that was kind of one of those things where it was like, well, if we end up using forestry equipment to do that, should we also be thinking about uh whether or not a timber thinning would be uh recommended up in that area anyway, because Stand Seven is right off Burma Road, so. That's one of the reasons that all got, kind of came to a to a point where we thought we could do both, we could look into it. Um, Nolton Preserve, we have a new steward. Uh, Tom Smith from Wellington has volunteered to be the new steward for the Nolton Spur Trail. And he um recently went out and re-blazed the trail. And um Chris also recently cleared some down trees that had come down on the Nolton Spur and the split rock trails, so everything there is working pretty well. Um, there's a landowner who lives adjacent to the Talmage Track. He had purchased the old Talmage Homestead that is on uh Route forty-four. And his property backs up to uh the town's Talmage property. And you can see his property from the trail. And he had contacted me to see if we might be able to meet out on the property at some point and look at a way to kind of um put a, a screen of trees so that where the trail and his property kind of intersect. Um, so he might have a little more privacy there, because he has a pond in the backyard, and he was concerned that a child or a dog might be attracted to the pond. There, there're quite a bit of, the pond's quite a bit away from the trail, and there is uh a barrier of a stone wall and also a ditch with a intermittent stream before the pond, so I doubt that it would be a big risk. But, you know, it may be beneficial to screen for his privacy, but also so that when people are on the trail, they're not looking at the backside of a house. So. When we had put the trail in there, we had definitely considered that. We kept away from his house as much as possible. Um, we actually avoided a nice area where we could have, we could have put in the trail, just because it really backed up a lot of his backyard, so. But if anybody wants to meet, um, would, would like to meet with me and the landowner uh um in December, we could set up a time. So. I mean, it would, we could probably put in some trees, like arbor veta or something that would grow over time and kind of screen things a bit more.
The arbor viti, the deer will eat.
Oh, good point. Well, some other thoughts?
Well, if it's open enough, you could try red cedar.
Hmm, okay, they won't eat that, huh?
Well, they'll nibble on it, but once it gets big enough, they'll leave it alone.
Okay, good thought.
I think that's the same property owner that had contacted the uh folks at Town Hall. Wanted to know if uh he wasn't aware that the town had bought the Talmage. And he was wondering about buying some more property.
Right, yeah. And, and I did call him, and I did explain that the town had purchased it using open fund, open space money from the um the state, and that, you know, they could not consider selling any of it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So he wants it planted on the town property instead of putting it himself on his own property?
Well, he was talking, he was talking about, just having a discussion about what we could do, you know? Um, certainly, he could do that as well, so that's a good point. Um, and it actually might even make more sense to do it on his side, because he probably has more sun on that side. Um, and there might be less, you know, deer might be less likely to go on the backside of his property than more in the woods where the trail is.
As he considered multifloral rose.
I hear it grows quickly.
I hear it stops kids from being attracted to small ponds also.
Uh, good point. Oh, well, you know, we'll, we'll have a conversation with him. We want to be good neighbors and see what we can do if we, how we can work together. Um. Okay, and town development, anybody have any reports from planning and zoning in the wetlands, CBA?
Things are quiet right now. Um. TA finished their new uh truck entrance. Uh, the solar array next door to them is up or installed. Now they're working on the uh parking area for the chargers and the drive-through retail uh store. And other than that, uh, just an awful lot of logging happen, or happening around town.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Thanks, Bob. Thanks for the update.
True.
Uh, regional pollinator pathway initiatives, I have no updates on that. Anybody else have anything to say about pollinators or?
It looked like the pollinator garden down at the park certainly grew well, it filled in. Uh, I mean, I was down there, I guess, right before or right after the frost, first frost. And uh, you know, it just looked like the, the garden area was just full of plant material. So that was, that was good.
Yeah.
So that's, that's good to see it thriving.
Yeah, was kind of surprised, like, at the end of the season, when we, you know, started to get droughtier, it seemed to kind of hang in there as well, without anybody really going down to water it, so.
Yeah.
I think it's well-established, right? Uh, open space opportunities, so last time we met, we talked about the Peddix property, and we recommended that the town move forward to make the purchase. Um, I made uh appointments to be on the agenda with Planning and Zoning and the Board of Finance. On October fifteenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that the town acquire the property for open space acquisition. Um, they had to do that under statute, um, says eight twenty dash twenty-four says that the Planning and Zoning Commission must approve any uh open space purchases um for municipalities. And then on October seventeenth, I went to the Board of Finance with Bob, and we also had um Public Works Director there, Troy Spizato, and um Carl Assamovic, the engineer who did the dam review. And we spoke to the Board of Finance and asked them um to recommend that the Board of Selectmen call a town meeting to appropriate up to forty-two thousand dollars from the Open Space Fund to use for the land purchase and associated costs. And they unanimously agreed to do that, so they've sent that recommendation forward to the Board of Selectmen. And now we're just waiting for the Board of Selectmen um to set a date for the town meeting. I did speak to Selectman um Tanaka yesterday. He said he was kind of waiting because there potentially had been some other items that they could uh put on the call for the town meeting, but that's not looking like it will happen. So he anticipates that at the December sixteenth Board of Selectman meeting, that they will set a date for the town meeting, so that town meeting, so that the town can approve the appropriation of the money will probably happen in January sometime. And then once we get the town to approve that uh use of money, we'll have to do the purchase and sales agreement, the title search, and then set a date for the closing, so. Um, probably we won't close on the property until spring. And I've been in contact with the landowner and let her know the potential timeline, and she's still hang, hanging in there and said, that's fine, she can wait.
Okay.
Oh. Um, just a little other update about uh the, the property, the Peddix property. So as you know, we had originally tried to see if we could use Lustig Road in Ashford to enter uh to be able to take out the building once the town purchases the property. And as best we know at this point, from working with the town of Ashford, it appears that they had discontinued the road legally back in the nineteen twenties. But for some reason, over time, that road remained open and people were still using it to pass through, as well as Mrs. Peddix was passing through to her property. Um, so although it had been discontinued, it hadn't totally been um unmaintained, if you will. I don't think the town of Ashford was plowing it during the winter, but at times, they were probably removing trees and stuff until more recently, when the landowners, the abutting landowners um asked them not to do that. But technically, what Mike Demato has told me is that because the town of Ashford discontinued um Lustig Road, basically, the property, the midline of that road, that section of road now belongs to, up to that midline, belongs to the budding property owners. So they have the right to control that property. Um, I've been told that recently, those landowners decided to put up fencing at the start of Lustig Road near the, where the uh road is close to the Langhammer Trail. If you guys are following where I'm talking about. So they put a fence there, and they've also put a fence at the border with Wellington and Ashford, where the Lustig Road comes in to Wellington, and they put a fence up there. And I did talk to one of the landowners, and he explained to me they don't really want people walking there anymore. That now that they're aware that this property basically has reverted to them, that they don't want anybody coming through the property. So I just wanted to give you a heads up, um, in case you hear from people that are walking in Fenton Ruby Park, or you know, that they had in the past been able to walk up that portion of Lustig Road, maybe to go to Langhammer. Um, that the property owners have decided not to allow public access on that part of Lustig, or what was Lustig Road in the past.
I think it's been a lot of cycles, too.
Oh, cycles?
Yeah, yep.
It's possible. Um, you know, I mean, that's their privilege, that's decision they can make, it's, it is their property, so. Um, you know, we have to respect that. Uh, we had hoped that they would allow us, at least once we bought the property to, you know, get a, a vehicle down there just to remove the uh, the house, but I guess um they really don't want to have people or vehicles accessing through that way anymore, so. That's, that's the current status of, of that. Um. Historic parcel on Jared Sparks Road. No updates on that. Uh, I have not tried to contact the landowner again. Um, after the holidays, I think I will, will do that. Wellington Wire, uh, let's see, the next article is due at the end of December. Um, does anybody want to volunteer to write something up? It, one page can be on any topic that you think's appropriate for a winter edition. It can be anything. It could be something about trails, it could be something about, you know, uh, wildlife in the winter, can be anything. Anybody interested?
When was the last one that went out?
Um, what was it about?
No, when, when did it go out?
Oh, the last one was due, I believe.
Was it September?
September, yeah.
Okay. Did, because I thought Marilyn wanted to do those.
I could double-check with her to see if she will do the December one. So if I hear from her that she does not, I can always send an email out.
Okay.
Okay, that's a good, yeah, you can, good memory, Laura. Okay, I'll check with Marilyn. Does, and if anybody wants to think about doing one for um, the next time would be March, it would be due. And it would be information that would probably be relative to spring. So, think about that. Communications, um, I received a letter. Communications, um, I received a letter from Amy Blackmore. She's the Executive Director for the Connecticut Land Conservation Council. And she was just thanking the commission for our membership contribution that we made um of a hundred dollars. Support for farmland protection. Uh, Jackie and Carol aren't here tonight, so I don't have any report on that. Review of current open space and natural resource maps and documents, um. I think we decided we'll table that until the spring. It's still on the agenda, just to keep. You know, keep reminding us that we'll have to work on that in the near future.
Sooner or later.
Sooner or later. And that's one of the things that. Uh Rod Parlay and Susan wanted to speak to us about too, was, you know, open res- uh, natural resource mapping and. And how you can. Uh, use that to prioritize uh lands that the town might wanna acquire or identifying. Linkages with other land, even outside of the town, you know, how do you work regionally? So that'll be something of interest when they come to speak to us. New business, uh, membership and reappointments. I, last night, oh no, excuse me, Monday night, the Board of Selectmen reappointed Jackie Coolig and Patty Phillips as regular members. Uh, for a three-year term. So their new term starts on December second and runs until December first of twenty twenty-seven. So glad you're gonna continue with us Patty. Okay, and then I had sent out a potential meeting schedule for next year. Um, oh, you probably can't see that cause the background's blurred, but you should have gotten a meeting schedule. That has all the dates for the third Wednesday of the month. Did everybody get that?
Yeah, we did, I did.
Okay.
Yep, I did too.
All right, so um, I did not have this specifically listed on our agenda, so we probably wanna just vote to add this. Uh, the twenty twenty-five meeting schedule onto the agenda under new business. Do I hear a? A motion?
So moved.
Okay, a second. This is just to add it to the agenda.
A second.
Okay. All right, thanks Laura. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved. Okay, so now we've added that onto the agenda. Um. Does anybody have any concerns about continuing our meetings on the third Wednesday of the month? And the dates, the dates listed here are. Hopefully accurate, so. Do I hear a motion to accept the twenty twenty-five meeting schedule as presented?
So moved.
Okay, I hear a second.
Oh, second.
Okay Bob, thanks. All in, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved. Okay, thank you. All right, and then in December, one of the other things we'll have to decide is our slate of officers. Um, you know, we have a chair, vice chair, treasurer and secretary position. So I'd like to ask members to be thinking about. Whether or not you might be willing to take on another role in the commission. Um, and we'll, we can recommend and vote on that in December. So that'll be on our agenda next time.
Yeah.
Is there any other business that people wanted to bring up, any topics? How do y'all feel about um, maybe quarterly having speakers from other groups kinda come and speak to us for. Short period of time on other topics, just to kinda break this up, make it a little more educational?
That sounds great.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay, and, and how long of a time period of our agenda would you suggest that we dedicate? For, for the speaker, cause I wanna know, you know, how you feel about length of time for these meetings?
Forty minutes?
I don't know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, probably less than an hour, but most presentations that the society has. Usually run about an hour, uh, but most of them are a little bit less. Um, depending on, I think, a lot of it, what the topic is. If it's uh another organization talking to, to us. That three quarters an hour goes by pretty fast because it's, especially if it's back and forth stuff. That uh is, is involved, what they do, but also our comments, what we've done.
Hmm.
Um, so. I, I. I don't know, I, I don't, I don't think a two-hour meeting is uh. Too long, a lot of, you know, and I've been to a lot of meetings over the years where. After an hour, people start looking at their watch and they're, they're anxious to get home and sit in front of the TV, I'm, okay. Uh, but, you know, to uh get some other information from other groups, I think that would be uh. That would be a positive uh thing.
Okay.
And I'm sure we have, you know, through our experience, we have, I'm sure we have some feedback on some of these uh topics as well.
Okay. Any other comments or suggestions? So forty-five minutes to an hour, including questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as we haven't got a, a heavy agenda Kathy.
Yeah.
You know, if we've got stuff piled up where. You can anticipate, you know, back and forth on one subject for half an hour, we certainly don't want to uh. Burden ourselves or the other, the people that are presenting uh with uh, with that, that kinda duration.
Yeah, you would, you know, hopefully want your speaker to start first. And then you would carry on with the rest of your agenda, and so if you had some. Difficult topics that we had to discuss and vote on, uh that were gonna take some time, you wouldn't wanna. Necessarily leave that to the end of the meeting, it would get a little tiring for folks.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, do you, anybody have some suggestions for potential topics or groups to invite? If you wanna think about it, we could discuss it more in December.
Yeah, why don't we think about that?
All right.
My, my mind is wrapping around uh historic stuff and I need to unwrap that and concentrate on what, you know, um. Nature Conservancy or, you know, that's one possibly have someone from the Connecticut Nature Conservancy, their chapter. And talk to us about what they've done. And Christine and I are life members. And they, you know, the Connecticut chapter always has something in their quarterly magazines. That I'm sure would be of interest uh to the group.
Hmm, good idea, okay. All right, well, um, think about it, if something comes up on your mind and you're thinking about it, shoot me a text and I'll just keep a running list. That we can talk about when we get together again too. Okay, so something pops to mind or you read something and say, hey, this seems like it would be. Good for us to know more about, just like I said, shoot me an email or a text and I'll keep a list.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, anything else that anybody wants to bring up? Okay, well, thank you, everybody.
Oh, before, before we leave.
Yeah.
Before we leave, tree lighting, uh, what is it, uh, December?
Seventh.
Seventh, at six o'clock, I believe.
Is it a Friday?
It's Friday.
Friday at six, yeah.
Excellent.
So the Glacier Tavern will be open for refreshments and general historical conversation. And uh, they'll have the, I'm sure that the uh. Chorus will be down there, uh serenading us. And uh, come stop by, enjoy the fires in the taproom and the kitchen. Look around at some of the stuff that we have displayed. Or maybe gaze and all at our new concrete floor in the two-car garage.
Do you know the, the time, Bob?
It's uh, it starts, well, the whole gizmo starts at six there for the tree lighting. They wanna start earlier. Uh, to, with Santa and everything else going on. Uh, and we usually, at the tavern, we, we usually wrap up by nine o'clock.
Oh, okay. I just, I have a, I have a thi- thing with some of my students baking cookies from four to six down at Eastern. And then I found the tree lighting was the same day, it was like, but.
Yeah.
So be able to get up for some of it.
It uh, and, you know, so, it's just neat to, to have that on the green and uh get people involved with that. So, you know, if you can manage, uh stop by and even if we only have hot embers in the fireplaces, you're still welcome.
And you guys always have some wonderful refreshments too.
Uh, yeah, we do pretty good with that, I have to say.
Yeah. All right, everybody, we'll have a wonderful Thanksgiving and um look forward to seeing you in December.
Okay.
So we're gonna adjourn the meeting um at seven forty-three. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say goodnight.
Night.
Goodnight. Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.